This is episode 545 of the Rio Grande Foundation's Tipping Point, New Mexico. I'm Paul Guessing, president of the Rio Grande Foundation, New Mexico's free market think tank. You can find out more about the foundation at rio grandefoundation.org. I am very pleased to be joined this week by Carol White. She is the head of the New Mexico Restaurant Association, but for the purposes of this conversation, primarily we'll be talking about her role with the H E L P or HELP Coalition here in the city of Albuquerque and Burnley County. Welcome to Tipping Point, New Mexico.
Thank you so much, Paul, for inviting me to be here.
Welcome back, I should say. You've been a regular guest, but before we get too deep into what we're going to talk about in terms of local elections, what is the HELP Coalition?
So HELP is a group that was formed for the last city elections. And the acronym stands for Healthy Economies Lead to Progress. And basically it's a measure finance committee, which means it's like a city PAC that is helping candidates that are pro-business, basically. I mean, we're looking for candidates, we're very bipartisan, we'll, we'll support candidates in either party as long as they are looking to do the right things for the city of Albuquerque.
And we are primarily going to be talking today about local elections here in the city of Albuquerque slash Burnley County. That the election day is November 7th. When is early voting getting kicked off?
It's October 21st, so we have less than three weeks, I think.
All right, so now is the time if you want to get involved in these local elections. And for those of you who are outside of the city of Albuquerque, some of you may live in places that have adopted the November local election setup. Some of you may not, but the schedule is the same if you have a November election. So I encourage folks to make sure that they're either involved with the candidates of their choice, that they're learning about those candidates, and that they've got a game plan as to when they're going to go vote. Again, early voting is always my favorite because there's no line. It is convenient and you don't have to worry that something crazy is going to happen on election day. So these are low turnout elections and truly your vote can make a big difference. And Carol, you're going to specifically talk mostly about pro-business candidates, but I do want to at some point discuss Albuquerque Public Schools because they are on the same ballot. I have my sample ballot right here in front of me. But, you know, Rio Grande Foundation's involved with the HELP Coalition. We're not a financial backer or anything, but we worked primarily on the mandatory paid sick leave issue. That's kind of the, what seemed to spark this coalition to be created, right?
Yeah, so a bunch of us got together after we had defeated the sick leave and said, what are we going to do? And, you know, we had all kinds of thoughts about it. Somebody very smart came to us and said, you know, unless you change who wins these elections, you are not going to be able to do anything about some of these very crazy proposals that they're bringing up at city council. So we decided to see what we could do. And that was the last election two years ago. And of the four candidates that we supported, three of them were elected. And so we feel very, very good about that. We feel like, you know, okay, we've got some momentum, let's keep this going. We were asked to help on county elections. We were asked to help on other elections. And we said, no, we're going to concentrate. We're going to, we're going to do what we did before in the city election and see if we can't get this down so that we don't have to worry about some of the crazy proposals that were coming out of the city at the time. And maybe we can reverse some of the things that have gone on during this mayor's, basically, you know.
His reign of terror.
His reign of terror, yes.
So that's my editorial comment. But, so yeah, let's talk a little bit about, you know, how things have gone over the last few years. Obviously, it's hard to necessarily say, oh, things are amazing with Albuquerque city government. You have essentially what amounts to an ideological split where city council, like you said, is, is less inclined to some of the craziest of crazy ideas. And let, let's talk about some of the ways that they've been more moderate than the mayor, but also ways that the mayor has not necessarily needed city council to do a lot of things and not do them particularly well in most cases, although even the mayor. For example, on the homeless issue, there was just a court case saying, you gotta let them sit in Coronado Park. So that's a judicial question. So I mean, we do live in a divided government, but talk about some of the ways that this city council has been more responsible. And feel free to share specific candidates that have been a part of the HELP Coalition or people who have kind of, that you've worked more behind that are currently on city council.
Well, and honestly, I'll tell you, I haven't had to do a lot with city council because they're kind of under control, you know? But, but last time we, we got Dan Lewis, Renee Grouse and Louis Sanchez. Those were three of the candidates that we got elected. And I'm not going to say we did it ourselves. We helped them behind the scenes. We could not coordinate with their campaigns and that's part of being a measure finance committee. But we helped them with certain mailings and other things that did get them elected. So, and it's, it's not that they haven't done some crazy things, you know?
And there's candidate recruitment too. It's not just about the candidate that is there because sometimes in some races, there's not a person who is a conservative Democrat or a Republican worth their salt that is on the ballot. So just getting those people to run and saying, hey, we, we're going to support you as part of the equation, right?
Yeah, so with all of these candidates, we have, we have talked to them. We've, you know, basically vetted them to see if they can fit within our mission. And if, if I can take a moment, our mission is to take an aggressive approach to crime issues and clean up rundown areas of Albuquerque, to work to further develop and grow the Albuquerque economy by reducing barriers to development and to make Albuquerque a more welcoming and attractive destination to attract new jobs and economic activity. So basically what we've done is put this in front of the candidates that we've vetted and said, you know, what of these things, you know, what can you tell us that you would do to make this happen? You know, and, and a lot of these folks are, are pretty, they're, they're not politicians, let's say. They're not polished at the time that we talked to them. So, so some of it is them just helping them form those kind of thought processes that help them do the right thing. So.
Part of it's communicating what the business community is hoping to see out of city council, right?
Exactly, yeah.
On some big issues.
Yeah, and so, so Dan Lewis, Renee Grouse and Louis Sanchez have been pretty much stalwarts on the, on the city council. We've been able to talk to them anytime there's issues that come up. And I can think of a few, you know, of course, there was the, talk to me, Paul, rent control.
Right.
Right? I mean, that came up and that was shot down pretty quickly.
Yeah.
And it's because these folks are on the city council. So, so, you know, in this election, we're looking at supporting Brooke Basson in District Six. We have Jeff or Jeffrey Hoen, H O E H N. And in District Eight, and then we're supporting Dan Champagne in District, oh, sorry.
He's running for Trudy.
He's District Eight.
He's running for Trudy Jones' own seat. I believe District Six is.
Six is Jeffrey, yeah.
And that's Pat Davis's seat that he's vacating. Both Davis and Jones are retiring. You know, partisanship is always a part of everything, even if they're not formally labeled. Trudy was ostensibly considered a Republican, representing Northeast Heights, while Pat Davis, of course, a Democrat, representing more of Nob Hill in that area.
Nob Hill in the International District.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Dan Champagne is running against a Democrat, Edelio Lachuga Tena. And Pat Hoen, Davis's old seat, has several other people running.
There's four people in that district.
Had another, another moderate Democrat, Dr. Pitluck Agiri, but he's decided to move out of state and I guess he'll be taken off the ballot or won't be on the ballot. So Jeff Hoen, so you've vetted these people, you've talked to them. You know, they're either, they're, they're good enough for the business community. You know, how would you say that city council will evolve or change with some of these people there versus without them there?
So if, I mean, if all three of these get elected, we will have a veto proof city council, which means that the mayor can, he can veto things, but they can, they can rule that.
Yeah, a six-person majority can override.
So, so that's exciting. I mean, there's some things that the mayor has vetoed that I think would help the city. And, you know, so if we can get a veto proof city council, that would be nice. Something along the lines of having a weak mayor.
Right.
But not exactly that.
Now, real quick, back to accomplishments, the plastic bag ban repeal, that happened with this current city council group. So that's another thing. And, you know, a big part of having a city council, like you said, that is, you know, going to be a little more restrained is that they are not jumping on every bandwagon that passes by. So it's a lot of the, the dog that doesn't bark kind of situations here.
That, and that's in my case, you know? I mean, I, I do think the developers and the builders probably, they, they deal with city council on a lot of other levels that I don't deal with city council. So I don't deal with city council unless something comes up that's bad. Sick leave, they had a scheduling bill, they had, you know, of course, minimum wage increases. And so that's when I have to get involved because it, it affects my, my members. But some of these other developers and real estate folks, I mean, they're, they're affected on a daily basis with zoning and inspections and all of those things.
And for example, that's one area where there was actually some overlap between the mayor and, and the development community in terms of casitas, duplexes and those kinds of zoning and, and building kinds of issues. And I actually thought that that, that was a good resolution to that situation at city council. Basically greenlighting extended, expanded use of casitas, not going down the duplex route. But there's obviously a lot of issues relating to permitting and housing issues, things that I understand you in the Restaurant Association are not going to know a great deal about. But those are other things that can be improved by having a better city council.
Yeah, and I think the way we deal with homeless, I will say that Jeff Hoen, he, he runs a homeless shelter for women and children. He knows a lot about homelessness and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what he, he proposes to do. And we've talked to him, he's, he's pretty sure that what this mayor is doing is not enough. And it's not, basically his criticism of the mayor right now is that he doesn't have any of these homeless shelters talking to each other. I mean, and, or, nor talking to the city. So they have no idea what's going on as a, as a group of people that are trying to help homeless. And so, you know, that's kind of the first thing he wants to do is make sure that, that these homeless shelters are talking to each other, that they're doing what they need to do. And I mean, I, I give him all kudos to that. He's gone, he's just been everywhere during this campaign season, really learning about what the business community needs. And he's run, you know, he's run nonprofits. So he, he knows, you know, what it is to run a business and make money.
And he's a moderate Democrat in District Six, which, you know, kind of looking at that, Pat Davis, I would say he's a progressive Democrat with a few pro-business leanings. You have some people in there that I would call mostly the candidates I've seen are well to the left of Pat Davis. Hoen would be a little bit more moderate than Davis for sure. But there is some real potential in District Six to veer off into La La Land, so to speak.
Definitely. Well, and, and then in District Two, we're not even getting involved in that district. And that's the downtown district.
Right, Isaac Benton's old seat, he's retiring as well.
Right, and we just couldn't find anybody that was, that was going to be, you know, somebody we could support. And so we're just staying out of that particular one. And, you know, there's two people in that district, and I think there might be a third one. I didn't pull this off of the city site, but Moises Gonzalez and Joaquin Baca. And Joaquin Baca is a handpicked person from the mayor's office. So we know which way he's going to vote.
Right, well, we kind of knew, I mean, I followed Albuquerque City Council for a very long time and we could always count on Isaac Benton to be the guy who was carrying the banner for generally the wrong approach to, about everything. Now, I, you know, obviously there's always issues on city council that even with a better council, you scratch your head sometimes and you still wonder why. And I'm not going to try to put you on the spot and ask you why some of these situations linger. But I do have to ask, free buses seem like something that just makes no sense that a moderate, reasonable city council would continue to go down that path with all the crime issues that are happening as a result, not, not just of that, but it's only exacerbating it. Are there businesses within the HELP Coalition or others that are pushing back against this? Or is this just one that, you know, you just kind of say, we haven't been able to get traction with these folks on?
Well, you know what, and not to put a restaurant on the spot, but I will, and I probably won't name the restaurant, but I will tell you that there's a booth in a restaurant that's right next to a bus stop. And I was sitting at that booth one day and there were basically criminals who had just come out of a Target and they were peeling the, the labels off, the Target labels off of whatever thing they had stolen. And it was, you know, usually big mixers, very nice merchandise. They're peeling the labels off before they get on the bus. I'm not sure why, I don't think anybody on the bus is going to stop them. But then they get on the bus from there, but they're at the bus stop doing that right next to this booth in a restaurant. So, you know, I mean, it's affecting all of us, you know? And, and to, to sit there and be eating and look out and see this kind of crime going on is just outrageous. And so it's, it's hurting all of the businesses. And, you know, I'm not going to say whether it's free buses. I don't think these people are hurting for money necessarily that's making that the, the transportation of choice, but certainly it can't help.
Yeah, it just seems like, I know there's a new study that's coming out, supposedly available for city council. And it strikes me that that would be something that they would consider low hanging fruit. Yeah, it's, is, is charging a dollar going to end our shoplifting and crime issues? Not necessarily, but I do think it will marginally move the needle a little bit. I mean, you know, I, I have grown more and more opposed to the entire concept of subsidized bus systems run by the governments. The more time I've watched the city of Albuquerque's bus system work, it's gotten more and more money and it's seen a rapid decline in the amount of people boarding those buses. And then, you know, I gotta ask about the soccer stadium as well. There's going to be a lease coming up in city council. And, you know, this isn't necessarily a super duper clear cut pro-business. You have some businesses that will support that kind of thing. There's always issues that are maybe outside the purview of what your organization is truly engaged with. Is that one of those issues? Or is there a consensus among kind of the business community relating to that soccer stadium?
You know, there is no consensus. I don't, I, I'm sure I have members on both sides and, and we don't take positions on things like that. Things that, that really affect our membership, things like the art, you know? I mean, you talk about bus systems, sorry to go back, but you talk about bus systems and art just wiped out our, our membership on Central. You know, whether, whether they're gone now or whether they're still there, they are, are pretty devastated, starting with art, going into the pandemic, coming out of the pandemic. I mean, they're just, it's, and, and coming out of the pandemic to the crime that's on Central is almost as devastating as art. And so, you know, they just can't seem to catch a break.
Speaking of those crime and, you know, the homeless issues as well. Now, Brooke Basson famously had her John Kerry moment, if you will, on the, on the Safe Outdoor Spaces issue where she was for it, before she was against it. But, you know, those are, those are tricky issues as well. But how do you see, just watching city council as you do, trying to mitigate against maybe Keller or the judges' approach to those, you know, what I think pretty much universally are considered the top issues facing our city, which is crime and homelessness?
Yeah, and you know, I mean, to me, it seems like there's kind of nothing being done. And, and part of that, and, and this is Carol's opinion, not really the opinion of the New Mexico Restaurant Association or HELP. But my opinion is, is that they're, they're labeling something homelessness and, and, which is not homelessness necessarily. I mean, these people, even if they had homes, they couldn't pay for them. They couldn't keep them up, you know? I mean, we have a problem with, with mental disability and, and drug, drugs. And until we label something that and start taking care of it, we're going to continue to have the problem that we have. And drugs and crime is, is huge. And until we start labeling this, it's not homelessness. You put somebody that's doing drugs and, and committing crime in a home and, you know, they're more likely to die there than they are on the streets, number one. And then, and then they're just more likely to continue to do what they're doing. So we need to label it differently. We need to figure out how to help those folks and, and then help them.
Now, to reiterate, you have Dan Champagne running for Trudy Jones' old seat.
And it's Champagne.
Champagne, okay. Jeff Hoen, District Six, looking to replace Pat Davis. Brooke Basson up for reelection. And then the other one where Isaac Benton is not running again, you don't have anybody listed in that.
District Two, we're not supporting anybody there.
And, you know, I, this is where I'll talk a little bit about other things on the ballot because there's always other issues to discuss. APS has its school board election. Peggy Muller Aragon has always been kind of the, the paragon of the, the leader of the reform-minded group. She's on the West Side primarily. She's up for reelection. APS is very critical, although, you know, kind of like city council and the mayor and the legislature and whatnot, there's always multiple hands in the pot. There's always multiple different groups that are engaged in policymaking, in this case, in education. Steve Seco, C E C C O, is running as a reform-minded candidate in School District Four. So there are people running to try to further reform the APS district. Now, there's also a bunch of bonds on the ballot here. And these are, you know, this is Burnley County, in some cases, city of Albuquerque. Let's see, all the bonds are city of Albuquerque. The election's being handled by the county though. So you have, you know, municipal bonds and I'll just say that unless there's some overwhelming calculation, I always vote against bonds because, among other things, citizens always seem to vote for those bonds. And it would just be nice to kill once, one now and again. Central New Mexico College has a bond also. And if you do vote against a bond, your taxes will go down. Yes, they may not be a tax increase, but they will be a tax decrease. And APS has a bond on the, on the ballot as well. So that is a brief rundown of where some of these issues are with regard to city elections. So right now, you know, it, these local elections seem so low key in many ways. Like I've finally started to see some signs for Peggy because she's in my area of town. But, you know, given my role with the Rio Grande Foundation, given my travels around this city for kids sporting events, if nothing else, I would think I would be seeing all kinds of signs and all kinds of information. I mean, here we are, we're in, in early October now. And you just, you wouldn't know when election's coming in about a month. Is that something, you know, you, you mentioned some of the mailers and some of the other things. Where do you see these candidates really starting to pick up momentum and trying to drive turnout and drive their election chances? Because early voting starts in less than a month.
Yeah, well, we, we are hearing from candidates that they're, they're walking and that's always good. But I, I'm with you, it just seems like a kind of a late start and everybody's, nobody's really into it. We're trying to fundraise for the HELP Committee and.
Well, if people want to support that cause, how do they find out about that? And what, what kind of help, if you will, will help give to, well, help, what do you need? But also what kind of help will you provide to candidates? Why would somebody, just throwing it out there, why would somebody give to help as opposed to giving to a specific candidate? If their view is the whole, the whole city and it's all, all their benefit?
Sure, so I, I think it's interesting. Again, you know, this group was, was put together because what we were seeing is that with the public financing that's going on, so each candidate gets somewhere around $40,000. And I'm not exactly sure how they split that up. But if they get public financing, they get $40,000 and that's all they get for the entire campaign. Well, what we realized was there are these measure finance committees that are supporting these candidates. And it was all on the other side. I mean, it was all the progressive candidates that were, that were getting this extra support. And so we thought, well, if we can do the same thing they're doing and help our candidates get some extra support. And again, we cannot coordinate with the candidates and we do not coordinate with the candidates. What we do is we, we do mailers, we do walkers. So we hire people to walk their districts and that's very helpful. And, and I will tell you that the last time we did this, you know, we were all kind of new at the whole campaign thing. We didn't know if the walking actually helped. And then when three of our candidates were elected, we're like, okay, we're pretty sure this works. And, and we'll do a few other things if we have the money. Right now, we're still, you know, working on collecting that money. And, and if you, if you want to help, not just somebody in your district, not just one person. And as a matter of fact, you can't give money to Dan Champagne, to Brooke Basson, because they've, they've taken public money, so you can't give them money. You can give Jeffrey Hoen money individually, but you can also give it to help and then we will help those folks in their campaigns. And, and it's not too late. Another thing we learned last time is that things just, they move slow in campaigns, but they also move very fast. So from here on out, you will start getting mailers like you can't believe. You'll start hearing about this much more. And it just, you know, it just piles on as, as we get closer to the election time. But we really don't want to start anything too early because people aren't paying attention to the election. And I will say, for those of you who are listening to this, you know, I know you're probably voters, but we can make a huge, huge difference if everybody that you know that's conservative gets out and votes for these candidates. We, we can win. And that's the, the fun thing about a low voter turnout election is that we could be the voters that turn out.
Yeah, it is one of the nuances of the election system here in the city of Albuquerque where we have public financing. And, you know, it's the way the mayor ran his campaign, especially his first one. I think both of them though, where they accept the public financing. Because I guess, for lack of a better word, that's free money to them.
Right.
And then they have all their friends and, you know, by have, I mean. they have friends who know that that candidate's running for office. And so they set up the MFC to support them, uh, and their race. So it's a way to get around, uh, the campaign finance system, which
Yeah.
Knowing the Rio Grande Foundation's views of these things, it's not surprising that we see many different flaws and, uh, problems with public financing. But on the flip side of things, it is the system we have.
You gotta play the game their way.
You gotta play the game, yes. Uh, ballot harvesting may not be a good thing, but, uh, it, it's the system in place in a lot of parts of our country, thankfully. Not truly in New Mexico yet due to the lack of real, you know, concerted mail-in balloting, uh, on a broad basis, although we've had those at the local level. So, all right, well, um, uh, what's the website again for help?
HelpABQ.com and you can donate there and you can see the candidates. And I would also say, if you're, if you're looking for something that shows you all of the candidates together, there was a, a great, uh, forum with NAOP the other day. I'm not sure where you get that. The recording, but if anybody's interested, they can always contact me or you.
NAOP is the National Association of Industrial Office Properties. They, especially here in New Mexico, are a prominent part of the, uh, you know, pro-business coalition and, uh, they have a lot of luncheons and whatnot. I don't know if that, uh, if their website is, uh, you know, has that information available, but, uh, certainly you can find the NAOP, nm.org. And, uh, you can see what they have available for you in terms of events and recordings and et cetera. But, uh, anything else you wanna, yeah, go ahead.
I, I need to correct myself. I'm being shown, uh, it's, uh, helpABQ.org, not dot com.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
That makes sense. Uh, rio grandefoundation.org as well. So, uh, yeah, uh, one, you know, obviously, uh, local election year, uh, the legislature's not up till 2024. And, uh, that has proven to be an even more challenging group to, um, effect in terms of the numbers. Uh, as I've told a number of groups, uh, publicly and privately, we have this unique situation where the largest city in the state has a governing body, at least not, not the mayor, the governing body, the city council that I would argue is to the right politically of the legislature that governs the entire state, which is extraordinarily, uh, unique, but it's also a testament to the effectiveness of help and other groups that have been involved. So kudos in that. And, uh, anything else you wanna, you wanna throw out there before we, uh, conclude this conversation?
I think that's all. Thanks, Paul.
All right. Uh, thank you for your leadership, not just of the Restaurant Association, but of, uh, uh, of this, uh, help coalition. And, uh, there's many people that put time and effort into that. But, uh, uh, we've had some successes, uh, and need to, uh, continue that. And hopefully it'll translate up the, up the ladder to the state legislature. Even heaven forbid to the governor, but we'll hold off on that for another two years after 2024. But, uh, thanks for listening to this week's episode. Find all episodes at tippingpointsnm.com or at the Rio Grande Foundation's YouTube channel. Subscribe to this show at Apple Stitcher or tell Google Home to play Tipping Point New Mexico. Thanks to Path Three Marketing for producing this show.